A zillion times in the last two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so far they're all black and gray.
Yeah.
Because of the bowl we used to have in these Oscar.
Yeah.
Uh, all hope has more happy days on.
There we go.
Sean, we need a pretty close.
And then to show you the back of this tree.
We need the most close first tonight.
Yeah, if there's most as you can get them, the better.
You sound much better though this time.
I will, yeah, yeah.
I, I, you didn't sound like you were in the mic, on the microphone at all last night.
What's on both sides?
Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah, I just want to fit, not a, sorry.
All right, well, go ahead and call our meeting to order. We have some guests that are going to help us get started. Do you like to come up and help us get started, Luke?
Hello? Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
C.C. And then Luke? 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 Do we have, Jody, do we have something for the student?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There we go. Jody, say that again.
I do not. I don't even have one.
Smile behind the mouth.
Great job!
That was really nice.
Great job!
Thank you, Missy. Put your hands together. All right, the first item in our agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda presented.
I will second the motion that I take and second by adding to approve the agenda presented in discussion. Hearing that, all in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go through the board protocols for addressing the board. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Virtually and in person for the processful board meeting. Well, we appreciate all those that are in attendance. We ask the virtual guests, please keep your microphones unused. Additionally, it's important to note that we won't be addressing questions or applying to comments through the text feature of the Zoom offers or the spoken format. As noted in the agenda announcement for this evening, if you have a public comment you would like shared with the board, you're asked to submit your comments in writing in advance to meet your home, your process flows that or we appreciate your assistance in monitoring the board to conduct efficient and effective meeting of the business across your school district. So, um, we're gonna try to make the sound better this week. Last week, we started with a little bit with the audio. Um, if board members and admin when you're speaking, hold the microphone close to you so that we can hear it. It's going through the P.A. system over to Sean who has a microphone or a speaker that's running the speaker through the Zoom meeting out to guests that are joining us virtually. So, please speak loudly and answer the microphone if you could, please during the talk. All right, we'll start off with reports. Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, I have three short items to report on tonight. First of all, at the last board meeting, I showed the February enrollment. It had declined 24 students from the January. And I just want to report on where those 24 students have gone. 16 of them have moved. Two are now being homeschooled. Four were choice transfer meeting if they reside in Crosser but they have choiced to go to another school district. And then two were withdrawn. I don't, I don't know where they, where they went, those other two. Those are the, those are the 24. And I can do that for March also, so just.
Were they primary, excuse me, were they primarily in, across the grade span or were they primarily at the high school?
There were, there were six at K.R.V., two at Witstrand. There was 11 at Heights. Two at the middle school and only three at the high school.
Okay, thank you.
So that was number one. Number two, I want to report to the board that Heights, Crosser Heights has received a $500 donation from Vinton R.E.A. That's used in their P.B.I.S. Program of P.B.I.S. stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. Since that's under the threshold of approval by the board, let's, I just want to report that. The third item deals with the state audit. It has started. I'm starting to send documentation for, for the 1920s school year. Every year at the start of the audit, they do a risk assessment. The auditor interviews me. We also would like to interview one of the board members. I can't remember, Scotty.
I did it last year. I did it last year or something.
And, and so if you're comfortable having him call you, I'll have him do that. I'm not sure if there's a specific time that you're open. I'll just maybe say, hey, I'll set it up for this time so he'll know, so. That was the only, those are the three things I wanted to report.
Any questions for Mr. Reynolds from the board? All right, thanks, sir. Next is Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Deanna.
So I have a couple of things before I talk about the work we're doing on summer school. Um, we are finalizing the furniture purchase for P.H.S. as part of our F.F.N.E. Brian, Casey, Dave, and I have spent quite a bit of time on that. And we, we, we're all still together, so it all worked out. Um, we are starting pre-punch walkthrough with the construction team and our architect because we have, uh, we're getting close to the end, believe it or not. So, that's gonna begin, I think we do that next week, um, which is where we go through and start looking at, looking for any items that we don't feel are acceptable. Um, so we're gonna be doing that next week, um, for the parts that are done, mainly the classroom, classrooming. Uh, the other parts aren't ready for that yet. June 10th, the building is supposed to be ours, so, uh, there will be, it won't necessarily be a time where we're just gonna like, everybody can be in. We'll, you know, we're gonna plan to do tours and so, and things like that. But we do have, once we possess the building, our furniture installation begins and that will start in June and not finish till the end of July. So there's still a process. We'll be moving things in. The new deliveries cost, we'll also have to move everything, um, from the high school that needs to be moved. Deal with the surplus of the things that have to go and the garters that has to go. Because at the very same time, Riverview has to be out of Riverview. So, um, it's, and Heights doesn't have to move quite as fast, but Heights also is gonna be moving. We're gonna have quite a dance, um, this summer. And that will lead into a little bit of what I need to talk about with summer school. Um, dyslexia met last night and we have selected two screeners. It was very clear, the two, Matt will be happy to know, Amira was not one of them. Which was an artificial intelligence one, it was, it was a little bit weird, um, but interesting. So, we're gonna be, uh, doing some trials and testing and piloting on the M-Class by Amplify Screener and the Pearson Ames Web Screener as well. So we're gonna be doing that over the next, oh, probably until towards the end of April. And then the building's gonna come back with feedback to the committee, so. It was very unanimous. They liked, everybody liked what they liked and didn't like what they didn't like. So, we actually went through all the screeners and selected them in about 40 minutes last night. It was fast. They knew what they liked. Okay, summer school. So I put a new updated sheet because when I have to turn, when I turn things into detail like a week ago, things change. And, um, we've had some summer school planning meetings since then. Um, we had a, and I just wanted to, um, give you the most current version.
Deanna is good when you, this is good.
It's yellow, the most current, I think Sean's gonna throw it up there on the screen as well, so the one in the pocket. There's some changes, not huge changes, but it is a little bit different. We are going to, uh, our plan is to provide summer programming for K through 12. Keeping in mind, we will only have two schools available to us this summer, Witstrand and the middle school. And we are gonna use the White Church. So, it's, um, gonna be a little different. And we are going to attempt to put K3 at Witstrand and 48 at the middle school. Once we go past below fourth grade, we have to do furniture moving and things like that, so that's what we're gonna try. We'll see what the numbers look like. I am, we're gonna do a springboard summer school. It is to help prepare our kids for the next grade. There's been a lot of things that they, not that they haven't learned them, they haven't had the opportunity to learn them this year because of the format that we've been in. So, the focus is going to be for pre-K kids will be, um, it, we've called it jumpstart. We're gonna make this one whole program, nobody separate. There's no separate, there's no migrant doing one thing, other kids doing something different. Especially doing one thing, other kids doing something different. There, we're all together. Um, Sydney and Eric and I, um, as well as my staff and his staff have been working on this. And we are going to do a Kinder Jumpstart program, which will help its kinder readiness skills, those gold stripe things, the gold strategies the kids need to know, counting, um, colors, plus how to line up in a line, how to sit down in class, all those things. We're gonna do a Kinder through eighth grade E.L.A. and math focus with STEM enrichment for the kids. We're gonna do credit recovery, course completion, pass, um, finish, you know, any of that finishing and completes at the high school um, here at the White Church. And we formally were gonna have E.S., well, it's called E.S.Y., but we're not, that's not gonna be part of it anymore, but they're gonna be part of the Springboard Academy. We will have life skills classes, but they also have integration opportunities with the, um, springboard, all of the springboard. Eric's gonna oversee the entire program, um, with my support. We're gonna have to hire site directors, teachers, paras, nursing assistants, office assistants. We are gonna hire counselors. I was hoping, um, I wasn't sure if anyone would apply. And we actually had a counselor today express interest, I put out an interest survey today. So maybe at least one counselor interested. Enrichment teacher stuff for the STEM. And then we're gonna do, we're gonna have migrant and spent support teachers that we're gonna push into the classroom, so all the students will be, will be, um, working together. We always with recruitment, we do phone calls and mailings, but primarily, we hire, usually we hire paras. Par, and usually paras that can speak Spanish so that they can communicate with any parent they call. And we call parents individually and sign them up. Um, we used to have this thing where they had to fill out a form, like, like two years, we fill out a form, always a form, I'm like, we already have all their information, all they have to do is say yes. They wanna come to summer school, we have their information, we don't need to fill out a form. Um, so you can see our timeline. We'll be posting the director positions now that we have a better idea of what we're gonna be doing. We're gonna start the 28th of June is our goal, but I have to work with Darlene because I know we also have an issue with food service moving and a shutdown and restart. So, we get this building on the 10th, they have to be out of Riverview the last day of school, like, everyone's gonna start moving. So I've gotta find out, we've gotta figure out how long it's gonna take them to learn how to use their new kitchen, because there's a whole bunch of new equipment in there. So I've got to find out, we've got to figure out how long it's going to take them to learn how to use their new kitchen, because there's a whole bunch of new equipment in there. So we've got some things to work out, but we will. And you can see, we'll be doing student recruitment, we'll be hiring, you know, our nursing staff, counselors, paras, et cetera. When I say final list with a little mark, it's because it's never really final. Like, we're getting close right up to school, we're still trying to get kids to come. Somebody doesn't show up. If we have full classes, we bring waiting list kids in. And our goal is to go from, like I said, we'll start the 28th and go to the 30th, go four days a week, Monday through Thursday. I think it's more attractive to staff and more attractive to parents and kids, because they get a little bit of a long weekend and still get to be part of the program. So I'll have more, because we're working on more details. We actually, I had three big posters of stuff we worked on yesterday, but we're making everything, we've got some things to figure out, like I said, with food service and some of those things before we finalize things. Because we may have to move our dates because of that. I don't know.
Deanna, do you think it would be more attractive to do like a Tuesday through Thursday? Have long weekends and just go a week longer on one end?
Well, I think staff is tired, so that's one of the reasons. We've never done it like an interest survey with staff. I did put it out today. It's been a long year, so we kind of had no choice, probably, but to give a break at the beginning, just because of the moving stuff that's going to be happening. I actually prefer we take like just a couple of days and we start, because the longer we go, the more kids we don't get back. But I think this is kind of the best we can do. We get out of school so late, and then we'll take that week off. We'll have some teacher work PD during that week, and then start that following Monday. And then if we end in July, because once August hits, lots of teachers in their classrooms. So if we end in July, they still have a little bit of time to have a little bit of a break again before they go back in. The more days we give off, the more days it's not like school, the harder it is to get kids to come consistently. So Monday through Thursday has worked well in the past, and it will give us enough time to really be able to work with the kids. You know, the more time we can have, it'll be fun. We, you know, summer school's always really fun. So that's our goal. Make it fun. Kids want to be there and help them get ready for school next year.
I have a question on the funding. Has the, I believe in the past migrant dollars, they, you could not spend a migrant dollar on a non-migrant child. But since we're, the way that you're doing it, you're pulling all your funds, which I know you always have, are, have they kind of relaxed that rule a bit?
No, that's still what migrant does, so our migrant support specialists will support migrant kids, but we all know in practicality how that works. But our migrant parents don't like being separate. And we, it doesn't make sense to run something parallel where people can't work together, and that's not what's best for kids. So we're going to do it. And we think we can do it in a way that's acceptable for the rest.
Any other questions from the board regarding summer school? I love this sheet, Deanna. In the past, we've always had questions on how summer school was going to operate. This is awesome. Thank you.
And it will expand. The more information will come as we continue to work on the program.
Do you have anything else to report on, Deanna?
I think that's it for me.
Okay. We'll move on to the next slide. I want to hear elementary principals report, and I'm not sure what order we're going to do that in, but all of them looks like they're coming.
They're lined up at the door.
Thank you, Luke. So if you could, as we go through, when we finish at the table, would you mind plucking it off so the next person has a thinking to start with that?
Okay. My name's Joey Saban. I'm the principal at Heights Elementary School. I am going to start us off with the elementary K-5 board report. So we're, we're going to start with some wins. At this point, between the three schools, we have 724 students that are attending in person. And with 277 that have chosen to remain virtual. At this point, all students that are, have indicated that they wanted to come back have been able to come back. We are, staff is providing in-person instruction in the classrooms and classified. Staff are able to assist in that with those teachers that are staying virtual, so that they have really been helpful for the in-person support as well as the interventions. The assigned building substitutes have been great. I know that there are some days that we don't necessarily have someone out, but they have really been very, very helpful and useful. I know for most of our buildings, we have them working in small groups, even in the afternoon and stuff like that, and I've got one that is working with a one-on-one kind of with a child, so she's been great. Transportation has ran smooth. You know, we've had a few kinks at the beginning, which we always do, but it's been very smooth. And the safety protocols have, at this point, have been successful. So we thought of that. And then just the parent support during this transition. They've been really good about what we've asked them to do. Changing some stuff up, they've been great. Our challenges really have been the students sometimes believe that their, the days that they go to school are Monday, Tuesday, and then they don't go the rest of the week. They don't, they're off days, they don't go, or they don't come back in the afternoon. And in the afternoon is when we have intervention classes, specialists, so in small groups, so that has been a challenge. And then the virtual, having them engaged, the kids are virtual, because we don't have that one-on-one support, or it's not as able, it's not as easily accessible as when the kids are in person. Needs, right now, what we're asking for is just extending educational opportunities through time or dates. It's really what we're wanting right now. Okay? All right, that's my part.
What do you mean by that, Jody? That last, the needs there, STEM educational opportunities through time or days, what are you looking for?
We would, I'm going to, I'll speak. Perhaps full days. You know, we've been taking some surveys with staff and seeing what they are wanting. You know, they also, they want to see their kids. They, you know, like, the half-days are a struggle. And so I think that just more of an opportunity for, to make sure that we're we're able to service those kids that are needing to, whether it's, you know, if you want to do more days, half-day, you know, AM, AM in the morning, PM in the, or B, you know, quarter B in the PM. I mean, it doesn't, we're open to anything. It's just that we would like to see perhaps longer days or more days. That's the big thing. Did I miss anything? All right.
Any questions for Jody?
That sounds great.
Thank you.
So my name's Chris Moore, and I'm the principal of Kinder Review Elementary, and I am going to talk about outreach for our virtual-only students. As Jody mentioned, we have virtual-only students a couple of days a week. There's generally three groups that are going on in our classrooms. There's the kids that are not in the classroom, but are in the hybrid model, so they would be our BD group. And then we also have our kids that are staying virtually all the time. So we provide small group support for our kids in the afternoon that are virtual. We also provide one-on-one or with our certified or classified staff for students that need it. We continue with class meetings to deal with classroom culture, so even if we're in virtual, you will be attending a class meeting in the morning for sure, every day of the week. Educational materials are still being picked up at our schools. Yesterday, KRB had one from in the afternoon and through the beginning part of the evening. So we try to get our materials out to our virtual-only kids once a month, all the things that they will need. We hope that our parents are still supporting our tutoring at nights with Eric's help. We monitor, like Mrs. Saban, Ms. Saban just said, we are monitoring attendance for virtual and in-person students. So we know in the morning if a student's supposed to be hybrid, and they don't show up, and they're not online virtually either, we call them to make sure that, you know, we know exactly where they're at. Meals are still being provided through transportation or pickup, and we provide enrichment activities for all of our students, whether they're in person or online through special weeks, student of the month, and family virtual months also. And then I'm going to go to the next page, and so I'm going to give you a little update on our elementary schedules. So we have three elementary schedules that, once again, remember they're dated, so that they're five years from now is when we're monitoring, over five years. And so our first one was 75% of all of our third graders will read at grade level by the spring of 2025 as measured by I Ready. So really, what the work that we're doing right now, in the learning model that we are in, we're really developing our foundation, our common understanding, assessments, things like that, towards the goal. And so staff are beginning to implement Calderon seven-step vocabulary routine in classrooms and in all content areas, because we know that vocabulary is one of our lowest scores in reading. Staff attended the third PD from Jennifer Powell on March 3rd, K-5. Staff continue to identify and plan instruction around priority standards with Wilma and with our instructional coaches. Students receive small group intervention right now, and just a little win to show is that student, I Ready readings data shows a combined 25% increase with the number of K-5 students who are above grade level or on or above grade level compared to the fall. So that's a small win. And a decrease 15% for students that are two or more grade levels below K-5. 75% of all of our fifth graders will perform at grade level in math by the spring of 2025 as measured by I Ready. Staff are receiving hot point PD from Wilma, Coza, around problem-solving math practice and the algebraic thinking. We have some, again, this month with Wilma for both K-5, either 3-5 or 4-K-2. Grade levels are working on common assessments and next steps in their PLCs. Staff continue to identify and plan and structure around the priority standards. And a win in math is, once again, when we looked at our winter data compared to our fall data, there was a 17% increase of K-5 students, number of K-5 students on or above grade level, and a decrease of 29% of K-5 students who are two or more below grade level. So it's a small win there that we were looking at too, as we monitored. And then the last of our student, our elementary schedule is 70% of all ELL qualified students will exit ELL services by the end of fifth grade as measured by Alpha 21 or WIDA. Staff are beginning, once again, to implement the Calderon seven-step around vocabulary, especially around tier two and three words for our ELL students. Once again, it said staff attended Jennifer Powell on March 3rd. Kindergarten and new students in person were administered the Alpha Screener one-on-one this month. Staff will administer the Alpha to students this spring. And once again, a little win is I Ready, reading data shows a combined 70% increase with the number of K-5 students who are now on grade level in vocabulary compared to the fall. Any questions?
Chris, you mentioned the Alpha, the WIDA, is that a new one that you?
So the Alpha, yeah. The Alpha 21 is going to change. We're going to adopt the WIDA in the state, and so the Alpha 21, this is the last year for that, and then it goes into the WIDA.
I think I asked kind of that same question when you guys did the steps earlier in the year. Okay.
Yeah, so this is our last year for Alpha 21.
Any questions from the board for Chris? Thank you very much.
You can get a clean chair. That's good.
I am Kevin Gilman, principal at Woodstrand Elementary School, and we just wanted to update the board about summer school planning. So we're using our assessments, our DRA, RAS, which is a running record. So we have two assessments there. We have the one that's online, and then we also have one that can be done in person or in a small group virtually, so you're actually listening to the student read, or it's recorded, and you can go back and listen to the student read. Along with the classroom assessments. And then we're starting to look at the students that are lacking in engagement or attendance. Those students that are not turning in assignments or not engaged with the work throughout the year, or have missed a lot of days. And then we're planning on sharing this information in the conferences with parents, inviting them to summer school. And it sounds like we're getting closer, so maybe some of those invitations will be able to go out sooner. Lost enrollment. So we've had kind of two different transition periods that we've seen at the buildings. The first was the initial one, starting in August and September. We have students leaving to go to different online platforms or alternative virtual schoolings here, even some locally, Richmond started a new kind of like a homeschool program that's a little of both. So we had a number of kids that went to that or to some other virtual academy. The next transition has been just, we've had a transient population this year where we'll have kids leave, but then we get kids in, and it's kind of strange. It's different than a typical year, and I'm not sure if we had kids coming in, because we were in a different format than the rest of the districts, and parents like that, the format that we are offering. And it, communication between parents and the school with kids leaving and coming has been somewhat difficult. We don't always get the so when they go to the new school, then we get a request for records. We're not always getting those. For an example, we had a student that missed several days in a row, so we had a home visit, and we found out from a relative that they actually moved, but we didn't get a records request. So then we ended up contacting that school, and each school keeps track of those records, record requests from various districts. And you can see in this report, it's been, it varies the reasons. Some of them, it's just been jobs, like I said, the learning models, it might be housing, like rent expires in that six-month period, and you might see some families that are leaving. Kinder recruitment. This is the earliest, I believe, we've ever started. And we're hoping to get some of those Kinder students that, or parents that were hesitant about enrolling their kids this year, trying to get them to enroll early this year's, last year I should say, trying to get them to enroll this year a little bit earlier than normal. It started on the 8th. We've sent home the flyers. It's been posted in a record bulletin, it's been posted on websites, social media. So you can see that there are a number of things there that we're trying to do just to reach the community and families to get them registered for kindergarten and get pretty some enrollment numbers.
I think I got a phone call on a text message today for enrollment.
Kevin, could you give us an update at our meeting on how the enrollment is, how this early push on all of the steps that you're making, how that's going?
Sure.
When a person starts the, when a person starts the registration process, a secretary is going to alert, and they have to accept it, and then they want to do the rest of the enrollment happen. So they can do, they do that daily or weekly. They can give us the number of how many they've already done.
How many are interested, how many are actually?
Even to the point where how many are completed or what stage they're in.
And I told Kevin today that we actually found a new preschool in our town that we didn't know existed, because we sent flyers out to the preschools, and as we're turning, are doing it, we realized there's a new preschool on Dudley that we never had last year, so we contacted them also this year.
Any questions?
Changing it up a bit, I'm going to present first and then turn it over to Michael for the secondary board report. I just wanted to start things off. And by recognizing that this is a classified employee meeting. And on behalf of the principal of the new building, I just wanted to give a shout out and thank you to our classified staff in each building. Food service, transportation, parent educators, the studio staff, they do absolutely wonderful Food service, transportation, parent educators, the studio staff, they do absolutely wonderful job. Without them, our building wouldn't be able to run. And we would be able to have kids in the building or, or hold events. So thank you to all of our classified staff. Opening up here, hybrid reopening, we also, you know, follow the same model as the elementary schools and want to talk about wins. And it may not seem like such in this environment, you know, those elementary levels a little bit further on in their offerings right now. The secondary level, we are going to count this as a window that we're bringing kids back in the building. And that number of students that we bring back in the building is dependent on the number of teachers that we have. And we are still in the small cohort, and that means that we have anywhere from six to twelve. We have been systematically and continuously increasing that number to incorporate as many students as we, as we possibly can. At HMS, that number has, has gone to two hundred and sixty kids that have been invited. And you'll notice the difference between the number of kids that have been invited and the number of kids that are actually in the building. Two hundred and sixty students we kept, have been invited to return. But because we are following, you know, the, the rules that we've set, if you miss three days or you have an attendance problem, we have been making those phone calls and trying to get the students that are committed to being. And so after all of the parent phone calls, that might mean that we switch some students out. So though we have invited two hundred and sixty, you have one hundred and ninety-three students in the building regularly. Or excuse me, one hundred and sixty are in the regular attendance each day, but one hundred and ninety-three students can be in the building. Based on the teachers. Prosser High School is a little bit lower than that, again, because of the number of teachers that are in the building. We have invited one hundred and ninety-four students and one hundred and sixty-three are possible in the building. And we have a general regular attendance of about a hundred and ten. And so that creates that constant, like I said, that the fluctuation between, between students and, you know, pulling kids out and replacing them with kids. So we have begun to add this number actually different even this week than, than last week when I, when I prepared this. So we are continually adding new kids and try and get the most, most of our student body in the building that we possibly can. There are a number of staff members who have received their vaccinations and now feel more comfortable. The closer we get to try three, we have a number of teachers that are coming back and trying to split three, which will add significantly student population to our building again. So we're excited about that. Again, in addition, and I just wanted to add on to what our elementary principals have said, that the parent educators have been absolutely wonderful in helping, we have three of our parent educators that actually monitor an entire classroom, so we're able to get twelve more students in those rooms by, by using them in that manner. Are, we do have a long-term sub and a permanent sub that is actively as a long-term sub because we lost a teacher right at, at the time when we hired the, the permanent subs. And so Cooper Blair has been active as, as a long-term sub for Ms. Watkins, Ms. Watkins. And he's been doing a great job trying to keep that class moving forward. We'll get about the safety protocols that we've implemented at both levels at both schools. And it's provided us with opportunities to grow and reflect on the processes. We just had the elementary schools over here today to talk about the transition from, you know, construction and due to construction when we move out and they're going to move in. And to pass off some procedures and protocols that we've been using with Glenn and the security team and get everybody involved there. So that's going to give challenges, as usual, we're always worried about attendance, making sure the kids are here. Our, I talked, I talked enough about the, the in-person learning and the students that are in the building probably. When I refer to attendance in this next, in the challenging section, it's about the overall attendance and, you know, we're improving. The changes we made in trimester two really helps with notifying parents, we're always identifying more kids who somehow are, our communications have been not going to the correct, to the correct people. So we're always identifying that and trying to recover that and get in touch with those parents. But we always want to improve our attendance and, and better engagement. And so those were constantly on the forefront of our minds. Similar to the elementary school, our needs include extending educational opportunities. And I just wanted to point out that when you asked this saving the question, increase those educational opportunities through, through time and or days. At the high school, you know, we're in a trimester system, so that already had an adjustment from the semesters. We moved to, we, we have seventy-one minute classes in a regular school setting. And those have been not only cut in half, but quartered because we're only meeting with our kids twice out of the week. And then on a half day, so we're not, our, our schedule is compressed by the number of days and compressed by the time that we were ready to meet. So similarly to what the elementary school said, anyway, we can increase that educational time and educational opportunities is a wonderful thing. And, and like I said, that sometimes is, is simply by adding more teachers back into the building, which we're excited about, so. And I just wanted to point that one out. And then back to the extension here. Again, more staff is coming, we've really been pushing hard between myself and, and Mr. Punk and excuse me, Mr. Pollitt, pushing for the labs to increase, so we have some wonderful opportunities in labs and we're, we're still trying to increase those. I've also been working with Mr. Lust, I'm trying to increase the activities, not just for athletics, but activities through ASV as well. And those opportunities. I hope these students talk a little bit about closing wish month, and I'll say that to them, but that was one of those educational.
At our last meeting, you for the projection was that on middle of March, which I know that's that you hope to have most of those students that are not typically go the virtual route back in the building at, you know, at some point or in two days or whatever it is. How close do you think, I know you're, I know it depends on staffing, but how close?
We're ways up.
Realistically.
We're ways up, and as long as we're in small cohorts, that number is contingent upon the number of teachers in the building. So that's what creates the, you know, the difference between the two. So we have eight hundred and seventy-one students in the high school. Of the eight hundred and seventy-one, I believe the number is six hundred and ninety-seven students that had said they want to come back. We're only at, and again, my number, we're very well below that, at one hundred and ninety-four that we've invited. So we're not inviting the students that have said no. So even of the one hundred and ninety-four that we've invited, thirty-one of those students, though they said yes originally, have not been showing up and aren't committed to being in the building. So we had, we have two hundred, but we still have four hundred more students that, that we would like to get in the building. At the high school level and secondary level, there's a whole different set of problems created around transferring between classes and, and transition between classes. So we've talked about that as far as the safety of our students and trying to maintain social distancing in hallways and at those transitionary times. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in heading into a move like that. Ultimately, we'd like to have the most students we can in the building. And in order to do that safely, right now, that number is one hundred and sixty-three.
And primarily those are students who have been invited.
One hundred and ninety-four have been invited.
Right, so hopefully we'll get to that place where those students are waiting that haven't been
Correct.
formally invited in.
And every day we're having more conversations with parents and, and students that want to come back and, and inviting more students back. The original timeline, I believe, was April first, excuse me, March first, for adding additional students anywhere from nine to twelve. Both HMS and the high school have been adding students from about the second week of small cohorts. Trying to build that number as teachers feel more comfortable, we've been adding more students. So if a teacher, a specific teacher that is already on campus feels comfortable, some of them have, have twelve right now, which was the max that we wanted in the small cohort. So, you know, we've been progressing to that and
In the twolent in the small cohort, it's limited by the space and the room, correct?
Correct.
That's where it's limited, it's not just.
That's correct, it's not just the number of teachers, it's also the space that's, that we're able to socially distance students and kids and people in general. And so, for example, I, we have, most of our classrooms, the max capacity in this social, in the social distancing setting is twelve students. Some will hold sixteen, one classroom holds eleven. And so, you know, we moved that teacher out to a different room right now, which is, that's not been a problem. You know, we're, we're making it work as best we can with the spaces that we have to try and get the most out of our, out of our building.
How much empty space do we have where we're just waiting for staff to fill it?
So we have twenty-one rooms that are filled right now with staff. And we have a teaching staff of forty-one. So yeah, it's roughly half. And again, as teachers feel more comfortable and safe, they have committed, I have five teachers that are committed to coming back at the start of trimester. And so again, that's, that's a lot of kids that we can get back in the building, significant percentage of our students, so. Those, those shots of really young from the vaccine are making people feel more comfortable.
We have a number of how many received them, yeah?
I do not have that information right, maybe again.
People that haven't, I mean, we don't know who everybody is that has gotten the vaccine just because some people have gotten them on their own. I, I've spent about two hundred names to Valdista or to the hospital. And then there's another thirty to thirty-five that got the vaccine in the very first round before we did that. And anybody who has wanted to get a vaccine can get one. So I, my estimate is about half, maybe a little more than half of our staff are vaccinated and the ones that aren't are, I think are choosing not to.
We should be ready to go back. Almost everybody.
As far as a second, as far as vaccine, so for, for people that were vaccinated in the first clinic at the hospital, those people will have their, if they went to their second shot, will have their full vaccine power by this weekend. And then there's people that come in next rounds for that, for the people that I have heard, for the people that have asked for a vaccine. Everyone would be fully protected if they went to their vaccine appointment by the week after spring break.
We did, we discussed that as well as a staff and, and counted the days of everybody was to get it when governor and he opened it up for teachers. If everybody was to get it or had the opportunity to get it at that point, we're talking the second week of April. Yeah, and as the, the point where you were fully covered by the vaccine.
And basically by, by the time spring breaks over, everybody should be back.
The week after, that week after spring break, the, the challenge is, I know that we had quite a group of people that are vaccinated at the second clinic that the hospital prevented, and they were supposed to get their vaccine this week and they didn't get any vaccine. So I know Michael has at least one teacher, there's some teachers that were planning on playing that Monday, that I think now it's delayed at least another week because they didn't get their second vaccine, so they won't have their immunity, but.
The steps we need to go through. Sorry, the steps we need to go through is to basically work with our labor partners on setting a date. And make sure that they have had ample time in order to get their vaccine. And so once we set that date and say, you're going to be required to come back on campus. And we've encouraged to, we try to help you get your vaccine. If you choose to or not, that'll be a view that your risk involved there, but we're requiring you to get back on campus. So that opens up a lot of classroom, now we still have the barrier with states. And so we do not violate that, even though the, the statement is kind of tricky with this statement of the state guidelines. Well, there are consequences involved. And so there's no way that in speaking with our lawyer, we can't have waivers, waivers don't cover us adequately. And so it's that six-foot variance that really is holding us up in a lot of situations. That that is one of the barriers now. Lots of lobbying, there are many people lobbying the state, say, saying, if Eastern Washington, we're ready to move to maybe three feet. Right, which almost feels like a normal classroom, you can set up a classroom with three feet spaces with desks. So that's one of the big pieces there is that even, you know, first we need to get teachers back in classrooms, everybody feel comfortable with the mitigation strategy, following those, have the opportunity to get their vaccine, then bringing back the kids. And then we can look at how many kids are choosing to, you know, extending the, once we hit that with A A, A D D and looking at those secondary level and trying to even build up cohorts. Then we can look at, all right, these kids are electing to stay online, these kids are wanting to be in school. Right, and then really trying to service those. Right now, it's, teachers are doing simultaneous instruction, which is intensive, difficult for kids to be online in front of a computer, three or four hours, you know, three or four hours a day. So they get antsy, it's difficult for them. It isn't ideal learning time, so we'll be working on trying to build that back out, but the big thing is, is working with, working with our labor partner, trying to set a date, trying to get everybody in like the analyst doing, and then get everybody back on campus. Open up more classrooms, get kids in those classrooms, start to build up the schedule.
Spring break is what the first four weeks of April.
Right.
For that's four weeks.
The, the interesting thing about schools and how schools are built is that the elementary rooms are the biggest, which they have the smallest classes and the secondary rooms are smaller. So there is that issue with square footage when you go on the six-foot rule, so in elementary classroom, a lot of them are like eleven hundred square feet. So there's those issues too, yeah, so that three foot, six foot.
Forty classrooms and that's four hundred and fifty.
I'll, I'll tell you that the Valley Vista and the hospital have been amazing, so they really have helped us.
The pivot points that we're looking at for the future is semester to try and bring back their, any cohort middle of high school level. So semester, spring break, in that Memorial Day week, and then we help out snow day factors in that. So to try and build it out for the end of next year, I think that really one of the big questions in my mind is trying to hear certain things, so that parents are comfortable with the model. And we're looking at next year, you know, I, I, I believe that we had some parents pull back their inner gardens and say, this wasn't the, this wasn't the year to enroll a child. And so I, I think that those parents still want to know that their child can receive a certain standard of education and certain standard of care there. So to establish that before we get next year and say, this is actually kind of what we're doing. So the, those are kind of the big, I think, marker points and the big pushes to try and get back to some sort of normalcy so that we can establish some confidence with our stakeholders and what, what we're doing. In talking today with different superintendents, the lobbyists are still saying that there's a divide between east and west. And they don't know that, they don't know that the state legislature is going to back off or L and I is going to back off that six-foot variant, which it puts us in kind of a, a difficult spot. Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Although the longer I sit here, I have the risk of having to fight everybody.
There's a box of cookies over there.
I'll just, I'll try and be real quick over, over this. Virtual learning, we are still offering our kids the, the best that we can right now in our virtual setting. We are still offering tutoring sessions and opportunities to meet with teachers through the labs. Even if they're not here, they can still come in and, and meet with their teachers in the lab setting. Office hours are still available. Our National Honor Society is still providing tutoring, which Kate might talk about later, but they're still doing tutoring with the, with migrants at the middle schools. We are still doing tutoring in the afternoons with our parent educators and our E L services, E L D services. So those are all still taking place, and I don't want to ever paint a picture that those aren't available. Our attendance has begun to drop in those, so we, we do really want to, to build those back up and make sure kids know that that's, that's still open. Updates on, on school improvement plans, I put all those in there. And if you guys are okay with this, this is what I'd really just like to say, I'm going to summarize it this way. We are, are working hard to implement what are called PLCs or PLNs, professional learning communities, professional learning networks. Professional learning networks and communities is, it's a system that is going to carry us into an evidence-based school. It's going to carry us into being a data-driven school. And so our efforts right now have been focused on in our professional development at the administrator level and in our professional development at the building level, have really been focused on trying to, to build an instructional leadership team or building leadership team is what I call it at the high school. And from there, we take that information out to our professional learning communities, which consists of our, our content area groups. And from there, then we, we boil it down. So I, I'm kind of just going through the big picture out here. PLCs, I believe, are the answer to all of these school improvement plan questions. As we get used to the concepts in a professional learning community, as we get used to being able to collect data on common assessments, being able to collect data that is common between teachers and common within the department and then common within the building, we're able And then common within the building, we're able to have larger discussions and deeper discussions on the same information. And so in order to build that, professional learning communities, I believe are the answer. And some schools within our district are further along in that process than others. And, uh, at the high schools specifically, we are working to, to re-institute those and build those and deepen those. To, um, to become more data-oriented, data-driven, and evidence-based, uh, with the, the learning of our students. And, um, that will go a long way, not with just our, our E L A goals, our math goals. But will also affect our freshman failure rates and our graduation rate in process as we, as we identify those kids and get to the root cause. Uh, of what those failures, uh, or what causes those failures. Any questions there? And one more thing before I turn it over to Michael, uh, he's going to talk about summer as well. Uh, but given that Deanna spoke about it earlier, I just wanted to add a couple of things to what Deanna said and then Michael can, can tag under this. Uh, Mr. Benny can tag under this, but in summer school, we also have, um, at the high school level nine to twelve, it talks about credit recovery. Uh, that credit recovery is through a program called Red Comment. Uh, we are also, I've been working with Mr. Larez, um, to bring back past packets. We've actually started past packets now, are going to start them in the third trimester. Um, with Mr. Larez and, um, Ms., uh. Martine Smith, um, those two will be, will be working with a group of students. We're putting them in what's called a micro tutorial, bringing back that program. Uh, we already have a micro tutorial, but we're creating more sections of that to try and help kids recover credits through the past packet program. Which then, uh, we're exploring how we can offer that same, same service over the summer. Um, to meet the needs of the kids. Not every, Red Comment isn't a fit for everybody. Uh, but between different programs, uh, you know, we'd like to offer, offer more, we do some more kids. So there's, there's the credit recovery program. In addition to that, Gear Up has been absolutely wonderful. Um, to us, they're again going to create a summer institute for students. It's, it's usually geared towards math. And Algebra One specifically to try and help kids, um, move, you know, that's the transition year from middle, middle school to high school is difficult. And so a lot of kids drop and have to retake algebra. We're hoping to, uh, recover those kids, build those kids back up. And get, catch the eighth graders on their way instead of preparing for that Algebra One course. Um, they don't just stop at math, it is also a tutoring session for other areas. And we talked about the past packet, we talked about it. They are able to, to tutor in other areas. So, um, between Gear Up and that, and past packets, I think it'll be a huge help for.
I have a question on, and it's probably a legitimate question, but the algebra for middle school, with my understanding, the middle school dropped algebra. At the middle school level seven years ago. And are you now putting it back in? Or, so that's not going back in? So when you say, you know, it helps kids get caught up, well, they can't get caught up if they've never had.
I, and maybe.
I guess I should have questioned.
I'm, I'm sorry. So Gear Up is specific to grant money that they help specific classes of kids. So they are currently working with our ninth and tenth graders. So when I'm talking about getting caught up, it's for the ninth graders this year, the ninth graders that are struggling with math. They will be tutoring them to try and get them back up to speed with algebra, but it is also, um, offering our incoming, in previous years, they offer our incoming ninth graders. The, the service as well to try and, and move them and bridge that gap between eighth grade math and algebra. Um, we've also been discussing a number of other things I can say this year is, uh, the creation of perhaps a, um, an assessment. Uh, that we can give all incoming ninth graders, uh, to assess their ability in math, to if they have enough concepts, with the threshold criteria. You know, does it take eighty percent for you to prove that you are proficient at math? What is that threshold we, that has to be determined? But we're in discussions right now, trying to create some type of a system. Um, so that we can assess where students are at coming into the high school. And if they're capable of, of a higher level class, then they should be able to take a higher level class. And, uh, so we're in the process of working on that right now and, uh, hope to have that soon.
It kind of, it's just my personal thought, and then we're going to move on, but. Not offering algebra at the middle school level really puts all students in math for once. And they're a year behind as they move their way to the high school.
Well, and I, 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 I. Yeah, and I, I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off. I, I want to say that behind is all relative. Um, we are used to having students, and Kate has talked about this before, Kate actually dropped the AP Calc class, AP Calculus. That was a big deal, uh, for us not to have enough students to even offer that class. Uh, and that was one of the ramifications of not having an Algebra course at the, at the middle school. Because now they're, now they have a pathway that ends up not being able to reach AP Calculus. And so we created things over the last couple of years to, avenues and pathways to try and, and get that back. Um, and this year sophomore class is the first of those. So we created a, an advanced geometry course or that, uh, we have a recovery geometry. Um, and I don't think I called it advanced, or did I call it?
Accelerated.
Accelerated, yeah. We called it an accelerated geometry. So we have students that were unsuccessful. Last year, geometry that moved into the recovery geometry of course. Students that were very successful at algebra. And the upper algebra students can move into the accelerated geometry course, get it done in two trimesters instead of three. And then take Algebra Two in their third trimester as a sophomore. Algebra Two B, their first trimester as a junior, and then we'll offer, uh, the upper level course. Uh, pre-calc as their second and third trimester, junior year. And therefore, because of that transition, they will then be able to take AP Calc and the other upper classes. So we're trying to recreate those pathways to get our attendance numbers back where they, they could be to offer the upper level courses. So. Um, again, it, it, it's, it's relative to be behind versus, you know, there, we have a lot of kids that, that could do it and we, and we realize that, so we're trying to find the.
When you, Chris, when you switched to Common Core now. I remember it started about third grade, with studies of junior now, about fifth grade, they started the Common Core now. Curriculum, is that about right, Deanna?
Yeah.
So when, when we did that, kids started running math anyway. And I don't know if, thinking that we ever, so if those kids caught up. We had, teachers had to learn how to teach math and the new curriculum. Parents had to learn how to understand it, because it's completely different to what we did. And then the students had to learn. Um, I don't know that we ever caught up with those students as we transitioned in that period of third graders back then. To kids that are juniors and seniors now. So were, were they ready to take algebra in middle school? Maybe or maybe not, because we didn't have them ready in third or fourth grade with the new curriculum. It is my perspective on it. So looking at a class like adding AP Calculus. How I just want my kid to pass a math class. So, yeah, we're worried about an AP Calculus class that. There's a whole lot of work that goes into getting the student prepared to take AP Calc. There is, um, and if that didn't happen from third grade to ninth grade to tenth grade. That student, junior grade, calculus, where do we operate it?
A, a couple of things about what happened with the Common Core standards, where there are a lot of expectations for students, higher expectations were pushed back. So there were, there's content. I was in, I think, a fourth grade math training. Um, we were doing with our fourth grade teachers and we were doing math content, but I taught as a sixth grade teacher when I was a sixth grade. Same concept, fourth grade, fourth grader. What happened with the decision with the middle school going away from Algebra One was the eighth grade standards are very heavy. There's a lot in eighth grade standards. A lot of it is algebra, probably half. Um, but there's a lot of other classroom standards. And what was happening was kids were going, we were basically skipping eighth grade math and we are taking Algebra One. And they could pass Algebra One test, but couldn't pass eighth grade. Because they were not getting eighth grade standard. So districts have a couple of choices. They can compress middle school curriculum. You can do like a six, seven, seven, eight, when they're sixth graders and seventh graders, and then do an Algebra One. Or you compress something in high school. What, what we found is there are kids that just weren't, we were, there were kids being pushed into Algebra One that really weren't ready. Is there a percentage of kids that can handle Algebra One? As an eighth grader? Uh, there are. But then we still have to figure out what we're going to do with the eighth grade standards that they would miss on the seventh grade. We have some kids that accelerate, the kids that are, um, I didn't honestly identify as kids that accelerate. Um, and those kids, those kids would do great no matter what, no matter what we did. But the, the decision to go away from Algebra One, Algebra One at the middle school was because the middle school had to teach eighth grade standards and if they were teaching Algebra One, they couldn't. So we, as a district, either decide we have to implement some sort of compressed curriculum. It very much, um, tracks kids in middle school really heavily. When you do that, or we do something like what Brian's talking about. You can test into it, we offer compressed option at the high school. They do have a lot, they do have longer periods. It is possible to teach it in two tries most. We choose to do three tries of, of not, basically nine and ten grade math, so they can do it. So they come up with some creative options. It's, but there's, there's decisions have to be made one way or the other.
Yeah, absolutely. And I don't, I don't want to suggest that we're only thinking about our upper level students and the advanced placement students. Uh, we, we created the recovery geometry course, uh, for that reason, to, to get the kids that struggle with it. We, uh, created the intensified algebra course for the kids who are struggling with algebra. Or have been identified at the middle school level that we know are going to, to struggle with, with algebra. Uh, and so, you know, it's all about pacing and, uh, the, the con- content and the priority standards that you're able to get to over the course of that, that track those trimesters. So again, that's something that we're working on and, and thinking, thinking a lot about. Any other questions for Brian?
Make sure.
Um, good evening, Michael Benny, I'm the principal at Alamo School. You, I might even look over to you because in past times, when I would pass my five minutes, you would send me a little chat saying, close it up, so I'm just. I don't see over there anymore. Go as long as you need to.
My eyes.
There you go, pretty. So I'll pick up where, uh, Brian left off, and that's with our update on our, um, school improvement plan goals. Um, and we had set our goals, as, as I mentioned earlier. Um, five years out, and so really what I'll be talking about are the bold points underneath each, um, in English, language, arts. Um, we have been working, uh, to go through the I Ready data and, uh, just to give you kind of a, a. Snapshot of the improvement of our students. And Chris had talked about this a little bit earlier on the same at elementary level. Um, we had, um, reduced the number of students reading below grade level by eleven percent while increasing the number of students that are above grade level by eight percent. And I, and I look at the number of students that are in those and, yeah, I think myself, no, that's a small, um, number. And Chris kind of talked about, you know, small ones, but. Um, I think we all agree that for those eleven, those eight percent, those are, are huge ones. And, and so, um, we talked about it at the beginning of the year. Giving all the hardships that, you know, the global pandemic has given us. Um, not falling farther behind, but in that, we're still, um, seeing teachers and students push through that and we are seeing, um, gain. These gains are all, um, I think it's for all of us are the same, our, all, all students have all been remote. Um, the testing windows were in, um, mid, late September and then in January. So, um. We've seen some significant improvements of our students, um, at the middle school since we brought them back. And so I would hope that our third window, the spring, uh, will show, uh, even higher gains. Um, and so in math, a little bit lower amount as far as the percent of students. Um, but we didn't see anybody falling farther behind. The numbers all moved forward. And so, and we thought that those were, um, you know, big ones for us as we were going through. Um, that we're continuing to support students and, and work on that. And some of that's a, a range, like it might be the kids that were red became green. You know, so there is some movement. It's not, you know, linear across, but, uh, we did see gains across. We're making the reds, the, the red, uh, line smaller and the green lines bigger. And that's really what we want, all green and, and no red. So we're making some small steps towards that. Um, we're doing a lot of work around professional development, um, in our English language, uh, development program. Um, uh, Veto Munoz is our, uh, E L L teacher, and we have implemented through E L S U a new curriculum this year. Um, in addition to that, uh, the training that he's received, and, and we as administrators that support that program. Jennifer Calvill had been, uh, providing, um, P D, um, every, every other week to our staff. And so, uh, with the, the change of schedule, bringing students back, um, we lost a little bit of that time, so we're. Working with Eric Lares to figure out how do we can, uh, continue to support that, but maybe give a little bit bigger chunks, less often than one every other week. So that work continues on. Um, in addition to that, um, uh, the E L S U curriculum, we're continuing to use that as a self-curriculum. And so we're using that whole set to make great. Um, as far as the character strong, a couple of pieces on that and some of it I just learned today. This is the first year where we have sixth graders taking the sixth, seventh graders, the seventh and eighth graders with eighth in the curriculum. We started with everybody got sixth, and sixth and the seventh graders got seventh, and now this year we're all, all three. So we're working on implement, implementation this year. Um, but I received an email today from John Stich, who works with C D E, that's our data partners that do the surveys. And they actually have a survey that, um, helps us monitor the effectiveness of character strong. There's enough schools that have implemented character strong. That they've created surveys around that. So, um, I just got it. I'll be looking into that in more depth, but that'll be a huge piece of feedback for us. As we look to monitor the implementation of that, of that social emotional learning, um, curriculum as well. Um, we talked about this last year and we didn't get to it, so we reset it as a new goal for this year. Our avid, um, goal, we're looking at our mission and vision, um, for our building. And we've been talking about that at the instructional leadership team and we'll be working on that and hopefully within a month we'll be able to come back and. Either tell you that we've continued the current mission and vision because we found power in that, or we've updated it. And so that work is ongoing. And then attendance, um, we've set a goal of the ninety-two to ninety-five percent, but this year really is a unique year. Uh, um, we have had conversations just this week with parents that said, from the left, stop calling me if he doesn't show up for class every day. He's doing his homework. That's what our, our recommendation is for him all. That's our, and so we have students that are getting their week's work concluded. And they're doing a good job of that, but they're maybe not attending, um, the, uh, the live sessions every day. We have students that are attending the live sessions every day, but, uh, not working on their homework. So we're, the way the state has asked us to count attendance. Is anybody who was engaged in any of those, in any of those matters. We have had students that have actually been out of the country, um, and spent some time out of the country due to a family emergency, and we were. Mailing them the books. They were contacting us. And so while they weren't always showing up every day, we knew that they had the material. They were receiving our phone calls and communicating with us about their situation and they were, um, producing a product in the, in the home. So. Those counted as present, even though they were international students, it will. So, um, a lot of, of different ways to look at that. So. Um, as we break that down, it'll be interesting to share, um, I think Brian shared that we were at about a hundred and sixty students a day. We have about a hundred and ninety-two, a hundred and ninety-three. That we've said are attending. Um, we get students that, that will call in and say, um, we had a close contact in our family. We talk to our school nurses, school nurse, meet with the family. Make sure that there's no, um, you know, nothing that we need to, to take care of. They set a timeframe for that student to be out until they're either tested or they went through the window. And they come back. So those students are still engaged and they still have a place, but they may not be actually, uh, participating in person all those days. So that's the discrepancy between the, uh, one sixty to one ninety-two. Uh, we had a kid the other day, missed two of his classes. He showed up at about, let's see, he got out at about eleven fifteen, he showed up at ten forty-five. Had walked from the other side of the airport over to school. So, um, there's some of those things that we're, you know, working through that, um, our tennis number. Do a little bit because of those, but we're trying to accommodate, any student wants to, to be part of our program, is part of our program. Um, you guys have talked about the numbers and I, and I, I pulled them, kind of jumped back here a little bit. Um. So we have a hundred and ninety-two students in our small cohorts as of now. If we were to add much more. Um, to those small cohorts and small incremental sets, we would soon pop out. I think Matt had talked about some of our, Brian had talked about some of our classes. Would be a maximum capacity. So what we've actually done is we've identified our first, um, our first level of students are the students we've recommended are at school four days, four half-days. And our next group of students we're recommending are the beginning of that A A, B B, and, but we can serve twice as many kids that way. So. We have a hundred and ninety-two students that are there all four days, the next phase, um, and we're hoping to implement this, as Matt said, right after the, uh, the trimester, um, transition. And we're, we're narrowing down the day and we want to be able to, um, to report that back. But hopefully by, I think we'd use mid, late March. Um, be able to bring in those A A's and those B B's, that it all set out, and it allows us to bring in the next one hundred and ninety students that have said that they want to come back. Um, through those phone calls, we found out that there's about another thirty students that say, you know, we'd rather change our mind, what we've been doing has been working, or, um, it's not in the cards right now or whatever. Uh, but we're looking to make that transition. So the class will have nine students that are there all four days. And then anywhere between two and six will come on Monday and Tuesday to give a class of about fifteen. And then another group will come in on Thursday and Friday, two to six, to give another group of, of fourteen to fifteen. So it really makes that Wednesday cleaning very important and the Saturday cleaning very important, of course, because we are going to have like elementary, not two different, um, sets of cohorts. So we have our A A's, our B B's, our C C C's and our remote students. And so trying to work to that and get as many of those students that have identified. Trying to work to that and get as many of those students that have identified that they want to be here on the on the books of being in person. Um, and so with that, some of our challenges will be transportation, that you know, doubling of our students that are showing up and then the drop off line. Uh, that's been amazing so far. So um, just making sure we get through that, get those kids on that um. That process and I I don't have any doubt that it will be successful. That kids are excited to come back. I'll speak for mine. It's a a fifth grader. I love him, um, but sometimes he um chose not to go to class as a an eleven year old. And I love his ability to be independent, but we need him in class and his mom and I are both working. So. Um, he made a comment. He came home first night, he was face down in the couch, dead asleep. The next day, like hell what he was asked the best thing that's happened to me in a long time. So. We see the value of getting those kids back and getting them in the class and um and from mine, he's only there two days, but it has had a huge impact on on the overall. Uh, outlook. Summer school, we kind of talked about summer school quite a bit. Um, we have a spreadsheet that we use and I'm sure all schools do as well. Um, that talks about, you know, what program kids are in, um, who's struggling the most. We're looking at E's and F's, we're looking at attendance. We're looking at I ready data. So we'll be able to, um, whenever the committee asks for it, we'll be able to say, here's the kid that there's a certain number. Here's the ones that we recommend for that number to go out. If we can have them all and we can recommend it all, you know, that, you know, that that would be great, but we'll be working through and and as we put on there, we'll be looking at past bill rates, attendance. Um, engagement, um, other things um that will go into that. So we can begin to make those um, those phone calls, those uh contacts, those parent conversations. Uh, may we have parent teacher conferences? I think it's the sixth and the seventh. So we'd really be able to leverage that to um really help. We lost enrollment and we've kind of talked about that. Craig's reported on the numbers and that elementary principal talked about that as well. And I I hope I don't offend anybody with this. Analogy and the principals are going to hold their eyes because they know I love analogies, but. For me, it's it's along similar lines and it stakes are much, much higher. So. Don't think that I'm minimizing this, but when Dish Network has a has a program and I'm I'm with it, but. I can get the same thing through direct. I'm looking at what's the best value for my money. Where can I get the programming I need? And I think our parents, like I said, at a much higher stakes level. Some of them made that decision at the beginning of the year, whether it was finding a school that was in person, whether it's finding a school that had already had online programming. Um, or whatever. So we talked about, how are we going to bring those kids back? Um, we've really been focusing on. What is the product that we sell and the value for that? And so we look at um, the instruction that we're giving. Is it is it high quality instruction? Is it something that somebody say, you know what, I might want to look somewhere else, but we're we're not able to get the same product of what we get at House Middle School and Cross School. Looking at the packages, do we have um after school activities? And and I know Kevin's been working scale off trying to. To get that and we get calls all the time, you know, Michael Crystal, what do you guys think about this? We're, and so I know that the. The athletics is another component, the extracurricular, the co-curricular. So. Our job really is in order to to bring a customer back is we have to provide the best product. And that has been our focus, whether it be instructionally, um, whether it be the way that we're um, the the the. Technology that we're providing and supporting, whether it be the interface of answering questions, whatever it is. We want to give them the best value for their for their student and that's what our goal is. And we believe that. That is what's going to bring the 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 students back, giving them the best product that they can't get anywhere else. And so I know that as we talk as principals, that's our goal is to provide something that nobody else can provide and and bring them back because we have those offers. And so. You know, we're doing a lot of outreach. I've got a lot of parents that said, when you're back and you're back full days, give me a call. I have that list. Um, I've been calling some that said, when you're back at home, even if it's a couple days, give me a call. So we've been making those contacts. To say, here's what we have. So um, in that lost enrollment, um, you know, we do have every year, I think last year I had seventy-five, eighty students. Forty moved out and forty moved in. And we've been really kind of leveling. Our goal now is to go out and and bring those back that. That we lost that are ours, that went somewhere else and say, we have a product that matches, not only matches, but. Matching is enough. It exceeds what you're getting and and we want to bring you back. And so that's really for us, our lost enrollment component. Is to provide that, the best value for their child that they can't get anywhere else. And so that's where our goals are on that. Um, just real quick, I talked about, um, or they talked about earlier, the the wins and the needs and the concerns. I I've got six pages. I told the teachers I would give voice to it. He was already giving me, there's looks over here to get time. So. I'm not going to go into every one of those, but the example that um kind of sums it all up. And and it was a question about, why should we send our students back to school? And and we're getting that. It's like, well, they're only getting half days. They stay in the same room. They're not moving class to class. And I had a very impassioned teacher come into my office and we have, each speaker has stickers with students' name on it. Every student has a. Has a place, has a, they are the representative of others. So they're they're not just names or numbers. And that teacher came in and pointed to the nine students and said, this is why they need to come back. Every one of these kids was failing. And every one of these kids is now passing my class. And the and the only difference was in that time, the only intervention was that we brought them back to campus. And so I can't, I mean, it maybe doesn't have the same impact on you, but to see that teacher. Point and say, this is the reason why. Look at the immediate impact that happened there. And we're able to see that across the board. And and there are still students that aren't engaged, like like my son, you know, maybe he hasn't made it to all of his. His electives or his whatever classroom he has, but hit when he's there on those days, he goes to everything. They were, they found out that there were things that were, he was struggling with it. He didn't even know he was struggling. So the power of that. Um, has been huge. So one of the biggest needs is, and I'm hearing it from all our teachers, and they've actually been pushing us as administrators. Give me more kids, give me more time with them, let me do my craft, give me the chance to work with those kids. And so that's been um one of our biggest focuses is improving the product that we have and getting more kids back to be able to enjoy and and partake in that. And that product that we have.
Including what those um initial gains were those with. Um, like you said, that eight percent, that's huge. You mentioned character strong and. Um, Brian, I think you mentioned it when we did, I was going through and find initially that a high school was transitioning to. As well. Jenny, what do we have at Heights? What program are you using at Heights?
Right. So we do teach. All three buildings here at PBIS, like we could be in the high school, you know, and there's, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be wanting to put our weight to it, like, yeah, PBIS. Like our high school videos and we are using um resources that will. So, but we don't have like a.
And we need to have something based out of this year. What is that called?
Uh, so we've got the full training packs and uh.
You were supposed to get it this year, but with the pandemic, we have not. It's been reset for the next.
And and pride has been receiving grants to provide those, that training for us. But as the daycare view was supposed to last spring to receive that training and it's kind of like. But PAX, PAX also follows the PBIS guidelines. Um, they're just. Good instructional strategies that to work with, um, building classroom confinement. Behavior, they have kernels that we look at are are the the things that truly run in your classroom. Spleen, which they explain, which is your engagement level, if the student's off task or not engaged, that's. But um, it it it's it's a very um systematic way to do PBIS.
And for the two secondary level principals, are you seeing those programs at the elementary levels funneling into your schools and that they're working? Are we doing anything? Is it working at the elementary level? And getting to your school and those students are following the character strong ideas?
I can answer that.
Okay.
He hasn't seen it yet. And I told him this, uh, because we we also have Swiss that tracks our behavior. And referrals and things like that. And um, when we started PBIS, I have a starting point. And as those kids are moving through and they've been exposed to the PBIS program, the PAX program for their whole career. My referral rates have dropped dramatically. And the last class was last year that we moved up to the middle school that had high referral rates. For the classes that are under that, that have been in those programs for multiple years, the referral rates are are very low.
Right. Can I follow up on that? And to say, the high school level, uh, Mrs. Skeen has been kind of paralleling. The character strong curriculum and uses components of that. She has for years. Uh, previous to our adoption of character strong curriculum from us. Um, and uh, so we do see gains in that. Uh, they've been. They've been focused mainly on our leadership class. Anybody who is in leadership can attest to the level. Of community, the level of culture building, um, and and character building that takes place in leadership class. That same curriculum is now what's being taught to our entire building, you know, all of us leaders. And I think the main component for me is just to know and for my kids to know and our kids to know. That character is not just something that is important at the elementary school, but it's something that is important at the middle school and is important at the high school. And um, and to have those character components, not the district, I. It it will pay dividends as we as we get better at.
And I wonder like at PBIS, we have lesson plans that are written by the teachers, that committee of what. Is expected like at high, you have a three R. So what is respectful, walking in the hallway is respectful look like, respectfully look like. What is response, you know, like what does that look like? And then we teach the kids, ideally, like not this year, but it could like rekindle here. Of reviewing what that looks like with the expectation.
How many rooms do you have? Uh, right now, um, because we have a. Uh, two halftime situations. I think we're at seven, or eight, excuse me. Um, one person is about ready to come back from um their wait period after the second uh vaccination. But um, we've got several that took, um, I think it was two weekends ago. Uh, the the all the district staff got an email that said, hey, there there's a room. And a lot of our staff took advantage of that. So I think the um, the number will be going down significantly, but I think we're. Um, we have twenty-four classes that have students in them. Then we have the two halftime, one we split with the high school and another one that's just a halftime staff member. Then I think there's eight there um that are waiting to finish their time before they can come back. And so, um, we've been, we've been fighting for that return as well. So. And that will just help spread out the numbers because we'll have all of our students want to be back. Uh, within the next couple of weeks. And so then it allows it to spread back out and maybe move from a classroom of fifteen down to maybe twelve. And then our next step, of course, is is the fifty, fifty, we'll look at the A A B B extending out the day, if and when that happens this year and then moving, you know, we're like, we're just going to keep growing. You know, from there. So um, we should have every student that wants to come back. Uh, back with the next couple of weeks. And if the teacher returns, if some of the students, I think there's two hundred and forty here or so. I have to to double check that say they want to be remote through the rest of the year. As as if we say, you know what, hey, we're going to have maybe on this activity or this or or socially, we're getting that call, hey. My son or daughter wants to come back because there's, you know, his friends are there, they won't get him back. Then we'll have room to be able to bring as many back as we have. Um, the the desire to come back. So that would give us more flexibility there. Okay.
Next we'll move on to.
So this week is the. It's becoming the last week of fall sports. Um, so we're just getting and prepping for that. And then next week is the start for spring sports. So last night there was a Zoom meeting for spring sports. We were doing registration of.
Thanks. Um, yeah, it it, a lot of the other things I hear all the time, people are like, oh, like student president, like, what are you doing? You're not impressed. And like, we're still doing a lot. Emma can attest, we're still. Lot of meetings, a lot of stuff. We did um a live stream on Friday. We have done all those. Yeah, but we gathered a couple of ASB kids and we did a live stream. It was a little messy, but it was really fun. Um, so and it was so, so good to meet in that small group. Um, like as one of those students, there were only like four of us, five of us, but meeting in that small group. So that's something that. As just like student leaders, we've been discussing more is like, okay, what can we do um in small groups like? That live streaming option so that our peers can see us together. Like that was, that's a cool thing to see. And then like also just looking at other um like gatherings, we might have the options to do. Um, we were discussing in the last ASB meeting how. We might be able to do like some in-person small assembly type deals. Um, you know, we saw, so I decided to do the assembly. Very loaded, but that's the kind of thing we're looking at. Like, I was just like, how we can, how we can gather um safely. But um, get students together because it's so healthy. And and um, we've also had some discussion with Brian and with Alex. Um, about getting some support from the hospital. Um, that's still in the works and we're still working on that, but first on. Um, activities we have in mind and um, yeah, we have some good connections there. And we've also been working on. A bunch of really little stuff, Care Basket um for students and teachers who are in special need right now. Um, right now, it'd be attendance for the high school, how there's not that many, you know, you got those students who are invited and are coming. Um, I can like one hundred percent tell you that's, I mean, there's, there's probably different reasons for that. But I have heard so many students, um, as they've discovered that, like, oh, go back to school, but then they. Realize that they're just doing the same thing they would have done at home. And so somebody have been like, oh, I'm not going to go, you know, they realize that and they're like. That's not really, you know, back to school as they envisioned it. And so I I totally get it's better than nothing, but um. Countless seniors especially have told me like, yeah, I'm not going to go back. I don't want to just sit in a classroom when I could, you know, do it from from home. And so like. I think that um. I don't know, I, being in school, actually getting that in-person instruction is going to be really important if you want. To retain students coming back to the building, which. Which I I don't, yeah, I don't know the the process to that, but I I think it's going to be the biggest factor in attendance. Um, and getting kids to see each other before the end of the year. Um. Yeah, and then Emma talked about spring sports starting and I'm more excited for that. I think it's going to be really cool. I think the attendance for that. Enrollment of fall sports was slower, but I think it's going to be a little more up with spring sports and we're excited for that. So. Yeah, that was all I had for you.
Hi, I'm doing good. Thank you. Um, so I wanted to talk about an event that happened uh last week, which was a missing business plan competition. Um, I was one of the four students that participated in that and um, even though it was virtual, it was a um fun experience to be able to do something like that. Um, I just wanted to say thank you um to those who were in charge of that competition for giving us the opportunity to um have something like that. And Miss McMurtry for um helping us students uh prepare for that competition. Um, so all four of us students um uh were awarded, which was something really nice. Um, so all four of us students, um, were awarded, which was something really nice of them for doing. There was only supposed to be three of us getting awarded, but all four of us were awarded. So that was really nice. And overall, it was just a fun experience, even though it was virtual.
Right. All right, next to board reports. Jess.
Uh, I was actually going to say that I attended nothing business plan virtually and was going to give kudos to Jennifer. She did a breakdown with her presentation and her candy company and she has new customer recovers.
I wish I could have said, but I wanted to comment on the, his yard sign and certificates that he gives to students. Uh, it's a, it's a tremendous student recognition and they're popping up all over the Wixteran area. It's been especially a positive thing in the Hispanic community. I mean, I, these families have whole celebrations to celebrate their coming with dinners and friends and balloons flying all over the place. And just acknowledge how proud they are of their child. And so I just wanted to thank you for that. But you look, Jennifer, you have to look. And it's a wonderful program. Yeah.
All right, thank you. As far as that's a high six. Your goodness report, so.
So there are a couple of things that I want to inform the board about. As Brian had talked about, it is classified employee appreciation. We'll be working on a small book of appreciation on behalf of the the school board and the district. Today Craig and I had a meeting with Jeff Homer from Clear Solutions about pre-litigation. We have a couple of different investigations going on. One, a discrimination claim and another hostile work environment claim that's going to be investigating. Safety and security, we had our PD, or I had the opportunity to be with the safety and security team. Director Coleman has opportunity to sit down on that. Uh, we talked about steps forward, but we talked about reinstating the badge policy as an early warning and identification time. And just small steps that we could make to improve our safety and security. CSG, I've been working with Dan and Dak on our micro estimates. They'll have a draft of the budget and a scope of the project ready for the board to review. Um, it looks like it's going to be in the ballpark for around five minutes. Um, of course, we'll have to make decisions about land sales. You know, there, there could possibly be some end of construction fund balances left in there with contingency bill funds and of course Patterson's contribution, whatever that may be. And so working on looking at that project and deciding if that's the direction we want to go. I sent the board a letter about the census, because of the census, we're going to need to reexamine the population invariances direct to districting, smamish data system. So some of that work, so I've reached out to them to find, to connect with the redistricting manager to help us walk through that process of compiling data and looking at the data. So we'll be addressing that hopefully at a future meeting. Yeah. Yeah. So reopening, we're working on reopening. You have that duty to work with. Or, you know, here from the principals tonight, they're working on expanding educational services and trying to get students back on campus. Of course, we've received that news from President Biden and Governor Inslee about uh, moving educational employees to the front of the line. Uh, so this in conjunction with a mitigation strategy, make it pretty safe for employees. At the state level, superintendents are working with legislators and trying to reduce the six foot distancing to three feet distancing, and that'll allow us to get more students on campus um, and have more teachers oversee those students. So a few miscellaneous notes, we're ending the second trimester. That's that's approaching athletics. Um, I want to amend our athletic director, I must, on working to find game for our student athletes, especially competitive game. We have opportunity to play ton water in in, you know, despite the outcome of the game, I thought it was a fantastic opportunity for kids to challenge themselves to get to the team. Uh, we're continuing to post positions. Um, one of the positions that was recently posted was for the business office and trying to hire that um, the position that was held by Becky Moore. And then, of course, uh, some of the elements that Jody Saban, whatever principles, has come to us with having students do the pledge of allegiance tonight, getting back to some of those elements that we were doing in person, like the bottom beyond the board or employees that we want to recognize. I think there's that. That will be an element that we reintroduce to boards. So any questions about any of that information?
All right, taking that. Um, our next item is a discussion item. It's a special act of the high school regarding graduation. Let's do that. Again, you guys all love to talk, so I apologize. Kate mentioned real quick, she mentioned the group getting together. You haven't watched The Office. You might want to. Uh, they did a little skit on the Dundee Award. So I want to apologize to all those students who got the award for most likely to be like Mr. Baby. Uh, including my own son. That was pretty good job. We've been meeting on graduation. Uh, for some time now, we've had some committees working on this and with a number of options and what that will look like. Uh, first and foremost, I submitted a recommendation that we, that we come to a date on graduation. And I feel like last year, though, we tried to do what was in the best interest of the kids, it created issues for us uh, by moving that date and then continuing to move that date. Um, I, that is the reason that I would like to recommend that we have graduation on the nineteenth, which is the Saturday after we leave school. I don't anticipate that that date will get pushed because of our current situation in online format. If we have a date that we are unable to come to school, we would then push that to online. And I don't, I don't foresee in any way, barring any unforeseen circumstances, that we would be adding this to the end of the school year. So the nineteenth would provide us to go back to the tradition of having it on the first Saturday after the last day of school. And that will allow us the opportunity to get all of our paperwork done early, be able to communicate early, be able to put things in place early and have that plan set for graduation.
That will kind of go on some more.
Correct. Wendy, Wendy, no, Brian. As soon as possible, I would like to submit paperwork to the city. Um, so just as a contingency, we have three plans that we've talked about and I just want to have all of them in place. So if we have a date, then I can at least get that rolling. The plan with the city would be as a third option. And again, and to go further into Ms. Douglas's question. You know, last year obviously was a different year. We were allowed by people on stage and that created a not, maybe a, not an opportunity, but a bad situation for us. Um, so in today's environment, it's the restrictions have eased. So I believe that we'll have everybody on stage that are used to be on stage. And now we're based on, you know, we have different contingency plans to to try and work through based on the number of people who can attend. Um, and so this is considered an event, um, which would be similar to our athletic events. And so if that took place right now, that would be two hundred people. Um, and so we have to have a contingency in place for that. If the restrictions get lifted in June, by June, then we we sit with several committees working on this. And there is there consent for the June nineteenth date? There is, yes. Uh, can we get back to you with?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is the approval of the consent agenda. Secret staff, classified was now approval of the minutes and approval of the avenue contact. Even if you could prove the consent agenda, please. Who can prove the consent agenda as presented?
I'll second.
Which may hand you a second by just to approve the consent agenda in the discussion. Hearing that, all papers, I'm saying hi. Next, our, our action line of agenda, first is the award of surplus buses. The, we went out for bid and both bus nine and bus thirteen. And the bidder was Albert Don't Hit Gallo. And it looks like that's the recommendation that the district is that that those buses be sold again, that correctly. There's need of motion to approve the award of sale of the surplus buses. I would say to be motion by, I think it's anybody having to approve the sale of the surplus buses as presented in the discussion. Hearing that, all papers, I'm saying hi. And next is the approval of voucher at the amount of four hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-two cents. That's proven by Mr. Reynolds.
One second.
The vouchers as presented in the discussion. Hearing that, all papers, I'm saying hi.
Hi.
All right, with the end of our agenda, our next meeting will be here on the twenty-fourth at seven o'clock. They'll also be available on Zoom to watch that night. There's no other places. Okay, I can do the journal. Yes. And in discussion, very true. Thank you all for joining us. Thank you folks on doing this tonight. Everybody.